There's seven board members. Is that enough for a quorum for tonight?
Yes, we just saw one case. We need five affirmative votes.
Is Jim an alter-- he's not an alternate, is he? I'm surprised, not just Jim Davich, I'm surprised not to see him. I ran into him earlier today and I... Anyway, if we need him or we're waiting for him.
Are we ready to start yet?
Mr. Casey have all his professionals? Karen, we're not hearing you. Sorry. Bob, you have your team ready?
I do. They should be on here somewhere, yes. They know about it and they're supposed to come.
I have Matthew Henderson and Michael Sullivan.
That's correct.
You want me to move them over yet or not yet?
Yes, please.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Are we ready to start?
I think so. I think if Jim Davich or Harlan join us, then that's great, but we have enough. We have seven members. We're good to go.
Okay. All right, let's begin. This is a special meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on June 17, 2020, at 7:30 PM, actually 7:40 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the Sunshine Notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the third day of June 2020 and has been posted to the municipal website, www.pristinnj.gov/meetings. Pursuant to, oh, excuse me, and choose the zoning tab to view. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and on the Princeton website and ought to be maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton. Notices have been placed on all windowed doors of the municipal complex. Claudia, can you call the roll?
Mr. Cohen?
Present.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Davich? Mr. Floyd?
Present.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Present.
Mr. Tenenbaum? Mr. Valvanes?
Here.
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. We have two orders of business this evening. One is a resolution and we have one application. Let's do the resolution first. The resolution carries the case number HPC 25 HPC dash 2019 and Z 1919 dash 74. Karen, I have a question.
Yes.
Basically, we're remanding this back to HPC. With this notice, this draft notice that we received, how do we act on this? Do we vote as a group? Do we vote individually? What do we do?
I would, you know, it's a regular resolution. So, yes, you have a roll call vote, just like we normally do, a motion, a second.
Okay.
And those who are eligible to vote will vote.
Okay, well, everybody has a copy of this. And are there any comments on it? If not, would somebody like to make a motion?
So moved, Michael Floyd.
Back end, Stephen Schreiber.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Our first application is, carries the case number Z 2020 dash 815 7 Spring Street, Block 27.01, Lot 9, in the QC 9 dash C and 9 dash R C B zone in the former borough. Okay. Derek, do you want to make an opening statement?
Sure.
Mr. Bridger, just before you start, I'll note the noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction and I will swear you in. Your swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. The use variance has been filed by Benson Henderson Enterprises to permit the office use in a zone where such use is not permitted. The required minor site plan has been submitted, although there is no site work involved with this application. The applicant is seeking approval to convert the existing retail space at 7 Spring Street to a community office use similar to WeWorks. Office use is not permitted in the first floor in the Central Business District, which is where the property is located, is subject to the Use in Bulk Regulations in accordance with 17A 304 and 309 of the former Princeton Borough Land Use Ordinance. The existing joint occupancy building is a permitted use. The site is bounded to the south by Spring Street, to the west by Witherspoon, to the north by Nassau, and to the east by Van Devener. Surrounding land uses are comprised of joint occupancy buildings, office buildings with street-level retail restaurants and service businesses.
All right, Derek, could you just slow down a tad?
Yep, yep.
Thanks.
Sorry about that. Subject lot and property are legally non-complying with respect to parking, building coverage, and FAR. In a history, the property was built in 1979 after the previous structure was damaged by a fire. Property consists of five floors with retail, office, and service businesses on the first three floors and 16 residential units on the upper floors. There was no resolution of approval in our records of this original approval when the building was constructed. The applicant proposes to utilize the existing 2,100 square foot office, our first floor space, as a modern community office space, similar to WeWorks, where a community office space is provided with an open working area, individual offices, conference rooms, mail, and copier facilities in a lounge area. The space will provide shared office space for numerous small business. Site was recently the home of Jane, which was a consignment thrift shop. Part of that, it was utilized as a retail shop and part of that, it was utilized as Kinko's Print Shop. And initially, the site was used as a real estate office for the first 10 years of the building's existence. Regarding the site plan, the site is fully developed and no exterior changes are proposed. They switched to an office use in this zone. It's based on a differential between the existing retail parking requirement and required office parking requirement results in a 1.25 space or two-space differential. It's less than the two-space required. Available under the ordinance, it's exempt. The D1 first floor, the variance request, first floor office is not permitted in accordance with Section 17A 305B4, which precludes office uses on first floor. And I'll just note that variance under this section shall be granted only by the affirmative vote of at least five members. No variance or other grief or relief can be granted under the terms of this section unless such variance or other relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. The applicant should address the following special reasons to justify the granting of the relief requested as required by statute. These reasons must be shown to be unique or peculiar to the property for which variance is requested and not generally applicable to neighboring properties. Reason why the strict application of the zoning prohibition of the requested use or development would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the land or building involved and evidence that the request to relief may be granted without major detriment to the public good or the impairment of the intent of the zoning plan, master plan and zoning ordinance, and the negative criteria. The applicant should also describe how the proposal relates to the master plan, the proposal's impact on the neighborhood, the community's needs, and set forth legal argument for the proposal as well as all other pertinent information. That's my memo. I will note that the Historic Preservation Committee did review this. They just wrote a letter and they noted that since no exterior work was being done on it, they really didn't want to have a review if signage or awnings are added. They note that the applicant will need to read the HPC for any exterior alterations. And I'll just read their last paragraph. They state that although the business entrance is a grade, interior steps elevate the interior four grade and display windows approximately three feet above the street elevation. The applicant states that this site does not lend itself to successful retail use due to the elevated display window and the accessibility restriction. Although they do not fully share the sentiment that these features make for an unsuccessful retail space, there is no object objection to this application since there will be no visible change except for signage. They do note that the project narrative indicates a bike rack is proposed in front of the site to encourage cycling and the HPC would appreciate the opportunity to comment on the location of the bike rack when its location is identified. Those are the HPC memo and my memo. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
I'm sorry. Okay, I guess the, I guess the applicant can start.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the zoning board. I appreciate the time this evening. My name is Bob Casey. I'm the attorney for the applicant, Benson Henderson Enterprises LLC. I don't dispute the recitation of the facts just set forth by Mr. Bridger and I appreciate him doing that for me, so I won't bore you to recite those again. However, I would just note that we are here tonight for a D1 use variance to permit office use in the CBD zone. As you will hear testimony tonight from Mr. Matt Henderson, who's an authorized member of the applicant, and you will hear testimony from Michael Sullivan, who is our professional planner, and Mr. Sullivan will give you what I hope are intriguing arguments and compelling arguments needed to breach that threshold to grant a D1 variance. I would just like to highlight a couple of those points right now. As you know, we need to meet the negative and positive criteria. This site right now is not currently suitable for a successful retail spot. It has a history of having office in it. The location of it doesn't lend itself greatly to retail use and it has not been that successful over the years. Like I said, I'll have Mr. Sullivan dive deep into those points and I'll conclude by tying those all together. I'd first like to introduce my client, Matt Henderson, get him sworn and ask him some questions about the site itself and the application, please.
Mr. Henderson, we'd like to swear you in. I don't think I see you yet on the screen.
It's up top?
There you are. All right. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Henderson, can you state your name for the record, please?
Sure, Matthew Henderson.
And where do you live?
33 Allison Road in Princeton.
And what is your relation to the applicant, Benson Henderson Enterprises LLC?
I'm the managing member.
Okay. And if you would, could you just please give us a little recitation of the history of 35 dash? What I know is 33 Witherspoon Street on the corner of Witherspoon and Spring Street, please.
Sure. As Derek mentioned earlier, the building was built in the late 70s. It was designed by Jerry Ford, a local architect, when the current building had burned, had a serious fire. I believe it was a grocery store back in the day. And the building was designed to, kind of actually pretty forward-thinking, to combine retail, office, and residential. And the current building comprises of, it's actually six stories if you include the lower level. There's 16 apartments on the fourth and fifth floor. There's offices on the second, third floor and there's a mix of retail on the first floor and office on the lower level. On the first floor, you've got a real estate office, a barber shop, a juice bar, and the empty space, which we're proposing to change. When the space was originally built, the space we are talking about now was actually built as an office. It was designed to be a real estate office with very little frontage and then a big space in the back. So it's about 2,000 square feet, but I think we only have about 12 feet of frontage upfront. And it's literally, it's five feet above grade. So it was never meant to be retail. And when the building was designed, it was carved out to have retail space. There was originally a Haagen-Dazs, believe it or not, where Tico's Deli is now. And then there was a Payne Weber where Berkshire Hathaway is now. And that was, that comprised the lower level, the whole first floor. And then it's been a bunch of different retail spaces, including Jane, which is a consignment shop run by my sister. And she ran that for about 10 years and could never really make a profit, including being rent-free. So so we are very much looking forward to having a paying tenant in there. And the, I guess, the impetus behind GIG or the shared office space is we have a lot of clients from our residential real estate company who just need an office space and they need, they need a space to come into. They need a space to be there a couple of days a week. And it's more of a flexed real estate, flexed office space where you'll have some common and public areas. You have some desks, you have some conference rooms, you have some teleconference rooms, and I believe seven individual offices. And the goal is to have, you know, 40 or 50 people involved in that space any given time who can consider it their home base in Princeton.
So would it be a membership-driven operation?
Yes. There'd be two components. You'd have, you'd lease your offices and then you just have a monthly fee to come in and come out of the office.
Okay, what would, would there be, what is the access? Access, is it a FOB situation? Is there a receptionist?
It will be a FOB situation off of Spring Street. Unless we get the 7 Spring Street address. And if we get critical mass, there'll be a full-time receptionist, office manager will be there during business hours.
What sort of resources will be inside the site? Copier, drinks?
There'll be, there'll be a little common Galleria area up front where we hope to have public functions. Anytime someone wants the space, that space is available. We hope to use it as a gallery for local artists. And then we're going to have two conference rooms. Both of them are connected with teleconferencing, which seems to be the new thing these days. And then there'll be a small kitchenette and a copy machine.
What are your plans for the exterior of the, of the site?
No changes, just changing the color of the awning and putting a different brand on the awning, but nothing else changes.
Yeah, there was some talk about access and Derek spoke about the parking. Currently, there's no requirement. We don't need a variance for that now, but if you could, for the board, just explain maybe where people would park in, you know, located, you know, nearby this location.
Okay, we've had some experience in running small office spaces, single unit offices, and believe it or not, most people are local and just walk to work, which is wonderful. Right across the street is the Spring Street Garage, which is a public garage. And then if anybody needed full-time monthly spaces that didn't want to go to the garage or couldn't be on the waiting list, we have space available at other properties.
I don't think I have any more questions for Matt Henderson at this time.
This is Steve Cohen. Can I just ask one question?
You may.
Until you hit critical mass, there won't be any onsite management?
We don't believe so. I mean, I'm always onsite. I have a very small world and it's basically between Allison Road and Spring Street. I'm always around. But we, that onsite person really depends on how many flex users we have. And so we feel like we'll need to hit about 25 to do that.
Okay. I see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Henderson?
Yeah, I have a question. Concerns the current situation with the virus, which is to say you have a common space. Are there going to be special efforts during the pendency when we don't have a vaccine to essentially discourage people from using a common space?
No, that's a great question. It's, it's interesting because a lot has happened in obviously the last three months on this concept. And we are a little more tentative about having the common space usage as opposed to just having the seven offices. And the, just having the seven offices right out of the gate makes all the sense at the moment to us right now and, and makes it viable for us as opposed to having nobody there right now. So I think it's going to be very gradual build. We we're doing this on a bunch of commercial spaces and the reopening is, is very what I'm looking for, cautious.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, let's move on to the next witness.
I'd like to call Michael Sullivan, please.
Mr. Sullivan, I don't see you on the screen yet.
You don't?
No. Does everybody else see you?
I see him. I see him.
You do? Okay. All right. If you would raise your right hand, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Michael. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Michael Sullivan.
And where do you work?
I'm a principal with Clark Caton Hints in Trenton, New Jersey.
And could you tell us a little bit about your, your educational background?
I have a Bachelor of Science in Landscape Architecture from Pennsylvania State University, also known as Penn State. I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, licensed landscape architect in the state of New Jersey. I'm a member of the American, I'm certified by the American AICP, American Institute of Certified Planners. I've been practicing planning for 28 years. And I've been with Clark Caton Hints since 1998. I've testified at over 1,000 public meetings within the state of New Jersey and have represented dozens of municipalities as well as private clients in a planning capacity. I've been certified by Superior Court as an expert planner, an expert planner with respect to affordable housing and as a certified landscape architect.
Have you testified before the Princeton Zoning Board before?
I may have, but it may have been so long ago that I forgot.
I would think we can accept Mr. Sullivan as an expert in his field.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michael, if you would, you had the opportunity to meet with, with my client, Matt Henderson, and had an opportunity to see 7 Spring Street. Could you just maybe help us understand why this application tonight is appropriate?
Yeah, I did, I did visit the site and I got a tour. So I visited the site in terms of the context, seeing how it lies with the intersection of the building itself, at the intersection of Spring Street and Witherspoon. I also got a tour of the space and was able to understand the general configuration and its relative position with respect to the street, the Central Business District, and within the municipality of Princeton. And what I'm, what I'm here to talk about tonight is really how the conditions and the, that exist here and the proposal made by the applicant fit within the context of the consideration of a D1 use variance, which is your classic use variance as identified in the application and accurately by your zoning officer, Mr. Bridger. I believe that Mr. Henderson has provided enough background as to what the proposal is with respect to this co-working space known as GIG and that it will consist of offices, common areas, and common facilities, and that no site improvements are, are proposed. But, so my purpose is to describe the variance and the criteria for granting the variance. And this is required because the Central Business District regulations do not permit office. It's a rather interesting way of saying it, but this, summarily, offices are not permitted on the first floor. What the Central Business District looks for are retail services and retail shops. And there's a list of 10 of these that are required on the first floor within the Central Business District, none of which are offices or co-working spaces. So that's why we're here. That requires the, the variance. I'm going to, I'm going to go through stuff that you've probably heard by other planners before, but I'm going to talk through the required findings that I'm going to go through as a predicate to that. When you, when you go through a D1 use variance, it's controlled by a case that the Supreme Court's court decided called Madici VVP R 1987. And this case held that in order for the board to grant this variance, that there must be a demonstration that the proposed development advances the purposes of zoning located in section two of the municipal land use law. Or that there's a substantial practical hardship to the development of a conforming use within this space. And those are classified as the special reasons of hardship or advancement of the, of the zoning criteria. If you find that, then you move on to the negative criteria. And the negative criteria are whether or not there's substantial impacts to the intent purposes of zoning ordinance or the zone plan or whether, and whether there will be substantial negative impacts to the public welfare that would result should you grant this variance. So I want to talk a little bit more about the use here before we get into that and, and bear with me. This coworking space has hours of eight AM to eight PM. Key FOB access, there may be a manager once you hit critical mass there. But I think it's important for the, for the board to understand who, who's using these coworking spaces. And there was a study and a report by coworking insights website, which frankly sounds like a, some sort of an advocacy group. But it was interesting to see who was in these coworking spaces. 21, 27% were startup teams. 2.35% were corporate, large-scale corporations. 5.49 were remote workers. 2.8% were digital nomads, and these are folks that just kind of go wherever they want to go. 38% were small to medium-sized enterprises. 16.6% were freelancers and 7.68 were entrepreneurs who were remote. So what this, what this shows is that the beneficiaries or the folks that use this are 71% remote workers, digital nomads and small business freelance-type folks. So that, that's an interesting demographic, I think. What these coworking spaces do is they provide low-cost opportunities for local entrepreneurs and business people. When I say local, I'm meaning folks who live in the area to utilize these shared facilities to conduct, start or grow their businesses. The US Chamber of Commerce has identified benefits in order to the users of these spaces. That includes networking, which is part of a, a community aspect, increased productivity, which as we, as we all know from working with at home recently, be so easy. Collaboration opportunities, which promotes a sense of community, cost efficiency from a standpoint of the scale and the commitment. These are monthly subscriptions, but also from a travel perspective. You, you, if it's local, then you don't have to travel as far. And there's greater flexibility, so a startup or a small freelancer doesn't have to be bound by an annual rent. They have the flexibility to come and go. So it's a benefit to the workers, the residents and the businesses by providing alternative to expensive, single-user facilities and buildings that might otherwise prohibit the ability for people to work and actually work in a, in a place like the central business district. So how do these benefits benefit the public of Princeton, I think is important. Well, in, in terms of, of the benefits, what, what we have to do is go through the purposes of land use law, and there's several specific purposes of land use law I'm going to deal with tonight. There are 15 of these purposes within section two of the land use law. And not all of them apply, and you don't have to meet all of them, you just have to meet one, but I'm going to talk about a couple of them. The first one is that, and, and I'll, and I'll start off by saying, I do think that the granting this variance will advance the purposes of land use law, and I'm going to specifically tell you now. Purpose A, which is to provide for the appropriate user development in a manner which will promote the public health, safety morals and general welfare. And purpose G, to provide sufficient space in an appropriate location for commercial space, okay? And here's why I think it meets those two purposes. First, the conversion of this 2,100 square feet of retail space to coworking use is an appropriate use within the context of the existing mixed-use building. Particularly on the strength, Spring Street frontage of the building, which suffers from a lack of visibility and access that renders it a relatively poor location for retail. And that's been evidenced through the testimony of Mr. Henderson, who's talked about the, the troubles even when someone didn't pay rent, that they were having trouble making it there. Conversely, the, 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 the location is highly appropriate for an office, which wouldn't require that visibility and that retail uses demand. Another reason why I think it's appropriate, purpose A and G, is it's located on the same block as the Spring Street parking structure. Mr. Henderson talked about that. Provides a convenient location for users of the space and visitors, you know, sometimes folks have meetings, not just on video. And it provides an alternative, the Spring Street Garage, an alternative to on-street parking so that it's not taking parking away from retail patrons that might otherwise want to park on Witherspoon Street or one of the other more populous and more retail-oriented addresses. Next, it's located in proximity to nearby residential neighborhoods that surround the central business district, which provides office space for those residents within a reasonable walking or biking distance. Now, normal, reasonable walking distance is about a quarter of a mile to a half a mile, which is like a 15-minute, a, a seven to 15-minute walk that people will do. And in Princeton, particularly in the central business district, it's an extremely walkable place. It's not like you're out on Route One walking to Forest Hill Center, you're walking to the central business district, which people like to go to just to walk, but it makes it attractive. Why this is important is that we've seen over the last several years, more and more development coming online in Princeton. Notably, the Avalon Princeton multifamily development consists of over 250 residential apartments, which is a half-mile away. This provides a place for them, if they don't have an apartment, office in their apartment, they get out of their apartment and they can come here to work. At Princeton Shopping Center, which is about a half-mile away, there are 200 apartments planned as part of the municipality's housing settlement. So that's another benefit, these new developments coming online. So there's, there's around 450 new apartments that are coming online where the residents of those apartments may be looking or would benefit from having some kind of a space like this within a biking or walking distance of their place. I'm not saying they all will, but it's a tremendous benefit to them. This, this property is also located a half-mile from 20 Nassau Street, which houses many small offices that are being shut down for redevelopment. And those businesses will need new homes and some may be able to move to this location, which is just a half-mile from their previous location. So we think that there's, I think that there's an ability to soak up some of this demand. It's location with, this business is located within the central business district, where there's a multiplicity of uses that prize a vibrant place that everybody wants to be. Office uses are permitted extensively, it's not like they're not permitted. It's, it, it's just the fact that it's above the first floor that makes this different. So it's not out of sync with anything and it will alleviate the vacancy and activate an unused space. Furthermore, it will provide new daytime occupants that will patronize, in theory, they will patronize other businesses within the downtown, such as restaurants and stores, once you can eat in restaurants and go to stores again. And that, that adds to the vibrancy of the downtown. So for all those reasons, I think it's entirely appropriate in this particular location and that its location here does advance purpose A and, and G of the municipal land use law. Well, a couple more purposes I want to briefly touch on, purpose I, which is to promote a desirable visual environment. The reactivation of this space, if you've gone by this space, you can tell it, it, it looks kind of vacant and forlorn. But the reactivation will create, uh, increase the visual appeal and aesthetic appeal of this use, particularly as the integration of any parts, as the applicant has testified to begin to express themselves here. And just by virtue, virtue of eliminating the vacancy and activating it, that will be an aesthetic improvement with the refreshing that we go on with that. Purpose M, uh, purpose M of the land use law encourages coordination of the public and private work to, to lessen the cost of development and use more efficient, and the more efficient use of land. By adding this office into a vacant space in an existing mixed-use building within an existing downtown, it's a highly efficient way of doing things. Furthermore, um, putting it in proximity to multiple, to a significant amount of multifamily residents and nearby neighborhoods that are single-family as well. It encourages pedestrian and bike transportation to the location, which is an efficiency. The applicant has testified to the hardship aspects of this and that they've had difficulty leasing it. They haven't collected rent in 12 years from my estimation, based on the tendency of Jane and the two years that Jane's been vacant. So the frontage on the street, it's a secondary street. Windows that are, it's five feet above the ground, so visibility, and there's no accessible access and to retrofit could create some, some nagging issues with respect to how that space is used and may reduce the ability to even use the space to integrate some sort of accessible lift or a ramp into that. But turning to the negative criteria, the first thing we need to do is look at the negative, any negative impacts to the purposes of the zoning ordinance of the zone plan. And the first thing we look at is the master plan and the land use element. I think it's actually consistent with the land use element and not, and that there are no detrimental impacts. Because the land use plan element in its goal stays that it wants to maintain a balanced community that offers a mix of land uses. And this does add to the mix of land uses and it's appropriate, as I've already said. And also preserve the existing character of the commercial and mixed-use areas of Princeton. And I don't think that there's anything that really changes in a negative way the character of this district, particularly the central business district by the addition of this use. I think it actually enhances it by creating more utilization even on the Spring Street frontage. And the other goal of the master plan land use plan element is to use economic and employment growth to preserve the community's quality of life and services. So this clearly would create some employment and economic growth in the town. Even though the employment growth may only be the one office manager once you get to 25, but in theory, any companies that are using this may use this to develop larger staff as they grow. And finally, the land use plan goal, preserve and protect the character of established neighborhoods. I think, I don't think this does any detriment to any established neighborhood. The purposes of the, of the zoning, it wants to provide for reasonable and necessary adjustments to present-day social and economic trends. Well, the economic trends say that coworking space is a growing segment of the real estate landscape and that this is a benefit, I've already told you about the benefits of this, and I think that folks are realizing that, that there is a benefit to this. And that one of the most beneficial places you can put this is in a, in a walkable central business community. And sometimes these benefit from being on the ground floor. And as we talked about before, the board member asked about the virus and the impact. What the virus has done, even in my business, has really sent folks to remote locations. And while it may not be appropriate for common utilization of the, of the workspace here, maybe that some folks who are reacting to how they have to work in the pandemic may need spaces like this in this particular location. So I think that that's consistent with the purposes as stated in the ordinance of the zoning. So um, I'm going to say this to summarize that this particular use in this particular location advances the purposes of land use law, notably A and G, I and M. And that there are, I see no negative impacts or to the zone plan. In fact, the renovations and refreshment of the wall core here will not preclude someday the return to a retail use here if there ever is a market for retail use that would demand this. So it doesn't inhibit the ultimate zone plan here. But at this time, this use is advancing the purposes of land use law and I see no detriment to the zone plan. I see no detriment to the public good. And I think that everything I've talked about here, that the board should have the confidence that they have enough evidence that's been put forward to render a decision approving this use variance. Thank you for your attention.
Mr. Casey, I just have one question for you. Mr. Casey, a quick question for you, you had submitted some pre-marked exhibits. Do you want to have your witnesses address them?
Um, I don't, I don't think they need to, to be honest, they're part of the application. And there was one exhibit that Mr. Sullivan had produced that, you know, there's not a much, a lot to it, no, no disrespect, Michael, because we're talking about just one solid building and there's no real frontage issues or anything like that, so I don't think we need.
Alright, so we don't, we don't need to mark them, I guess, for this hearing, they're all just part of the application then, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Sullivan?
I don't have any. I guess there are none.
Okay, so, so at this time, that is all our testimony for this evening. Obviously, in reliance upon the application that's been before the board, the testimony tonight, I would ask that, that the board vote in our favor, finding that this D1 variance for office use does make sense in this area, I would submit at this point. And thank you so much for your, for the opportunity and, and for this special meeting tonight.
Do any board members have any questions before we open it up to the public?
I, I got a couple of questions, and this might be addressed to Mr. Bridger. What is the definition of a first floor when you have this much elevation above the street? That's question number one. Question number two, are there other offices with similar elevations above street level in the central business district?
I mean, I, I just call it an office, I mean, the first floor, it is the first floor visible from the street. The grade doesn't really have anything to do with the definition of a first floor. In terms of the, the higher elevation, I, I think maybe the most similar situation might be the Gunn Building at the corner of Bank Street, which is next to 20 Nassau Street, it's an old very ornate building and it
I was thinking.
Higher first floor, and they've come in several times for similar relief because it wasn't suited to a residential or a retail use, so.
Thank you.
It looks like it's an Amsterdam styled architecture building.
And if I, if I may, real quickly, Derek, you may recall 34 Chambers Street. We had a very similar application for a use variance there years ago. Because again, it was just not, the first floor really wasn't designed for, for me on that one, but it's an hour.
This is the Princeton University Building at the corner of Bank and Chambers, yeah, yeah.
I have a question for Derek Michael Floyd. In the same line is the, the space on the corner of Hall Fish and Witherspoon, the Hall Fish Building, would you consider that? Cause it has below grade, but then the first floor is really above grade. Is, you know, do you cons, does, do you consider that to be a similar case? It's occupied now, but.
That's the Hillier Building with the
Yes.
Hair salon and the
Yes.
Yeah, that's, I would say that's similarly, semi, similarly challenged. It's, it's got kind of a weird foyer where you enter between, you're like four or five feet in the air and you go down to the basement and you, you go up to the first, what I would call the first floor.
Yeah.
That probably, that building's had some issues too with, with Tennessee, the hair salon seems to work, but I, it's just.
Yeah, yeah. Again, in the same line, if you, if you look across the street from this building, you know, there's buildings that have exterior steps. You know, you gotta walk up four steps, so that's. You know, you gotta walk up four steps, so that's kind of above grade. That might be something a little bit similar. That this is not such a absolutely one situation. Another question for you, Derek. Do you have any office on the first floor applications in, in front of you now currently?
I have another application that we will be hearing in the next couple of months, depending on when it gets through SBRAB at 16 Chambers, which was, it's next to 20 Nassau Street. It was the old firehouse.
Yes.
Down sold to a developer for office space in a bank wants to go in there now and banks are not a permanent use. So probably in an abundance of caution, I'm sending it to the zoning board for the termination of that use. It's a retail banking use site. I think it's different than the office use that's there now, so.
Okay, thanks.
I have a couple of questions. I should know the answer to this, but I don't. If we grant a D1 variance, is that, does that last forever? Or, I mean, for instance, if they decide to take it out of a shared workspace and put it into a bona fide office, would they have to come back to us or is?
Well, I, I think the board's last case like this was the Palmer Square application where I was a Bryn Mawr Trust. And you did, I mean, typically a use variance runs with the land, but in that case you did stipulate that if that tenant left, the applicant would return to the board for approval of another use, office use or.
Well, I'm just going to note that that, that application really had a unique history because it had a history of the applicant accepting variances tied to tenancy. So that had been going on for some time at the property. And I think some other facts at that property would distinguish it from this application. We can certainly ask the applicant what, what their thought is here.
Sure.
Thank you, Derek.
We didn't envision this to be a space where we have tenants that come and go as they need office space. And it's very flexible space for people. We have found in the last 10 years or so, managing a lot of different buildings in town, that there's a tremendous demand for small offices. People need them for startups, they need them for their second careers, they need them just to get out of the house. And I think if this three month lockdown has shown any light on office space, it's that people really want to stop commuting. They want to stay local and they want to really take a step back from, from how they used to live. And so we're, we're very excited about the space even before, you know, COVID-19. It's just been one of those unserved markets. We, we managed at 34 Chambers, a lot of individual office spaces until the university leased the building. And there was always a demand, the offices were never empty. There was always a waitlist and it's one of the things that people really look for as a quality of life tool. And so we see these offices as being shared for, you know, for, for the, for the long future, I guess.
Okay, I have another question. According to the application, the space was used for 10 years as the Henderson office of real estate office. That's correct?
That's correct.
This doesn't really change use much from in a real estate office to a shared space office, does it? I mean.
In my opinion, no.
Derek, what do you, what do you think? Derek?
I mean, I think you'd have to look at the whole series of uses, the building itself, the physical constraints it has and. You would in that context.
All right, third question. You have to build it out or is it, is it like this now?
It will require some build out. It's one of those spaces that for almost 40 years has just been added on and taken away and patched and walls put up and walls taken down. So we envisioned gutting the entire space back to the, to the cinder block and to the beams. And then putting in the necessary offices. One of the big features, there's not a lot of window space in the front, so we're trying to get as much light as we can to the back. And so if you look at the plan, you'll see offices down the left side and in the back. And then basically an open space in the center with a lot of glass. So it would be a really impressive space.
Thank you.
Question, would you be, would people who take advantage of this have the ability to use other spaces or part of a network?
No, this is a sing, this is going to be a, just a single space for Princeton. That's a great, great question. Thank you.
Have, I have a question about, have there been any retail tenants that have even looked at it in the last couple of years?
Yes, the, the, there's a few drawbacks, the location and the height. But there's a design flaw. When you walk in, you open up a door and then there's steps. There's probably, I think, five or six steps that go up to the main platform. It's very uninviting for a retail store because either you have to have the door open and people sort of poke in and look up and then decide either to come in or not come in. So that's very challenging for a store and it's tough to keep the door open all the time. So when the door is closed, it also is very uninviting. So it's, it's just, just never quite worked. And I kid around about my sister running the space. She was, ran an amazing store and it was a great niche. It just, she couldn't get over, you know, the, the location. And there's so much of her store and retail stores are facing online competition that I think it's just going to get worse now. As everybody's sort of shifted their habits. So to answer your question, we have not a lot of success showing the space.
Are there any other questions?
I guess I do have one more question, Mr. Henderson. There are a number of empty buildings or empty retail spaces in Princeton now. Is that a projection you have going forward that the number of retail spaces is going to continue to be empty and would this just be one more empty space?
I think there's two parts. I think they will be a retail mix that will figure out how to succeed downtown. It has to be things right now that Amazon can't ship. It has to be coffee, ice cream cones, you know, popcorn shops, things that people can walk around town and just have an experience, but not really. It, it, it won't be a traditional retail store like a Ulyss anymore or an Allen's or any of the stores from long ago. They just can't compete. What makes this space so suitable for office is that it was designed to be office. That was the original concept and that was, you know, for the, for the user to ultimately, the first user used it as office. So I think that's just a slight difference with this space.
But yet a lot of these stores are about to close our national chains like Brooks Brothers and places like that. And I, I agree that Amazon probably takes some hit out of it, but it's also the retail rents that takes a big hit out of any of these.
It sure does. And, and I think a lot of the components, if you look at Panera just closed. And Panera has realized that one store can serve a much bigger radius. And so instead of having to have a store in every town, you can have a store that say out in, in Route one that can service a lot of people with easier access. So that's another thing these stores are facing, just trying to find bricks and mortar stores now are just almost catalogs or for the bigger brand. It's a, it's, it's, there's no real solution to it. I think it has to do with more people in town servicing as residents increase and apartments increase. And you get a little more density, you'll have some more support of local smaller shops.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, let's open it up to the public. How do we, how do we do that? Do we have any? Eve, do we have anybody waiting to join? Any questions, any hands raised?
Eve, do you have your mic, not mic?
Sorry. Stockton is there and, and there's another, I can't, I don't know who it is, but there's, there's another name there.
It's Deanna Stockton, she's a municipal engineer and Elizabeth Kim, she's the HPC officer. And there are no questions at the bottom, right?
Okay, so I guess Karen, is that, so we can say that we will close the public portion of the hearing?
That's correct.
Okay, so now we'll go on, we're going to executive session and discuss the application.
So wait a minute, Claudia, you know that E S, E Schulman is Elizabeth Kim, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's discuss this. Any comments on the board?
Okay, I'll go first. Michael Floyd. On, on the hardship side. I can understand that just how this, this property is laid out with the interior steps and interior space. What I worry about is that much of Mr. Sullivan's justification of the positive and the negative, especially the positive, is an argument that anybody on the first floor with a vacant retail space could follow that argument. And that this would then set a precedent unless we would make it clear that it's really particular to the hardship setup. And also understanding the last question to Mr. Henderson and his, you know, response. And even Mr. Sullivan said earlier that this is sort of might be a wave of the future type thing. As, as retail, you know, just gets weaker and weaker. If the town's going to really support office on the first floor, then it should be done through the planning board by changing the zone. If it's a particular to, a particular piece of property, then, you know, I feel more comfortable approving this. So to me, how, if we approve it, how we phrase this is very critical. Cause whether it's, you know, another Realtor with another property that's vacant, that is actually on the first floor. Most of Mr. Sullivan's, you know, presentation. If we endorse that supports any space. So those are my concerns.
George, you gotta unmute yourself.
All right, George Stein, in response to, to Michael Floyd. I would think the uniqueness of the architecture and the location of this particular property give it a hardship that would not be accessible. Except for many, very, very few properties as currently configured and structured in Princeton. And so I take your point very seriously, but I do think that you can make the point, this hardship is unique or close to it.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I just say if we approve it, we got to make that clear.
Agree.
Yes.
This is Steve Cohen. I agree with both Michael and, and George. This, this does, well, this is a unique space. The height differential from the street, I think, is significant for a retail space. And the fact that it's very narrow, given the size of the space. So the, by the time you take the stair, if it's a 12 foot wide space, by the time the stair comes out of it, you've got eight foot of frontage for 2,000 foot space, which I think is very difficult from a retail standpoint. So I think this one offers a very unique situation. I agree with you, Michael, that, that we don't, we want to make sure that we talk about the uniqueness of the space. So we don't leave the door open for anybody to come in on with a retail space and, and change it to office space or a bank.
I agree.
Are there any other comments from any board members, questions, comments?
I, I actually think this is, I, I agree with the idea of us needing, wanting to word this carefully. But I would be very much in support of this. I think it's a good use of that space. And I think, not that it's our job to help us see into the future, but I think it could potentially be sort of a test case for how other, you know, pieces of property are, are used going forward. It, it might, it might actually have that benefit, even though that's not the point. So I, I would be in support of it, assuming that we can come up with a, a good way to define it in terms of it being the unique characteristics. Just, just so that we can continue to make decisions going forward based on the merits of each, each case. Without getting ourselves into trouble with being too vague.
I, I think, I think you're right. I mean, we have to look at this, we have to sort of see what else happens in the central business district to see if, if retail is gonna, the, the nature of changing retail space is going to prompt more offices or other uses. So, and if it does, if in fact we see that, then I think what Michael says is correct. This is a case that the, both the planning board and the governing body have to look at. But this case, I believe, is unique. Any other comments? Well, I think at this point then, hearing none. Does somebody want to take a crack at making a motion that would, that would capture what we've just discussed?
I would make a motion to approve based on the fact that the unique configuration of this property constitutes a hardship within the meaning of the D1 variance and that the negative impacts are minimal to nonexistent.
Somebody like to discuss that?
Yeah, I would agree with that, sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, I, I would agree that with that and add that specifically it is the, the narrowness of the street frontage and that i- in particular, that kind of second set of particularly narrow stairs to get into the building. I, I'm familiar with that. It is kind of an awkward entry that it, it, it is very difficult for, for a retail space. You, you kind of can only have one person coming and going at a time.
I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
I think we've also got to talk about the height. You know, this is.
Yeah, and the height.
I mean, it's more than a few steps above the street. So I think, yes. So how do we, how do we, Karen, do you want to take a crack at this?
Well, I, I think that the, we, we have a motion as amended by you and Ms. Chen. Well, I, I think that the, we, we have a motion as amended by you and Ms. Chen. I think that sets forth the distinctions for this property. And if you have a second, when I prepare the resolution, of course, we'll circulate it. We'll also let the applicant's attorney see it. And I think we have enough information tonight that I can prepare the resolution consistent with the motion as amended.
Second.
I'm sorry, who's second?
Stephen Schreiber.
Is there any further discussion of the motion before we vote? Okay, Claudia?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Vavani?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Thank you. It's approved.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Good. Thank you. Can we take a moment?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, board.
Thank you, everybody, for your time. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Thank you. Stop by.
Derek, I have a question. You had brought up the possibility of additional special meetings to get rid of some of our backlog.
I was thinking, we need to just look at the complexity of the cases that we have coming up and feeling for everyone's schedule. But the next regular meeting is July 22nd. So I was thinking maybe the, the Wednesday before that, if that works with, with everybody. But Claudia will send out a, a poll via, you know, email and we'll get the availability and maybe have one or two cases or three, if we can get three fairly straightforward ones then and then. Because we do have a lot of stuff coming up and it keeps coming in, so.
Great. Don't we have a meeting this month? Another one?
Yeah.
Yeah, next week.
Yep, yep. But we had one case next week that had a noticing issue, so they're bumped. So it would be good if we could have one in July. I understand it's vacation time and if you can't make it, that's completely understandable. But we're just gonna see if we can get that organized.
So are we, are we having a meeting? Do we have anything to hear next week?
Yeah, we, we have, we have two cases next week, right, Claudia?
Yes, 495 Ewan on the subdivision on Quaker Road.
Okay.
So we'll try to get an idea of this week early next and get some emails out to you about having a special meeting in July.
Okay.
We, we do have a July 22nd meeting already scheduled.
Yes, sir. I was thinking like July 15th, the week before that. I just have to check. There's other meetings on, so. Just have to make sure that we're available.
All right, is there anything else?
I guess they, they did send us what, that Affordable Housing Ordinance that they just passed? Or in, they introduced it, I guess.
There's two ordinances. One is like an overarching Affordable Housing Fair Share Plan, which has all the parameters of the affordable housing. It was been updated for this round. You're welcome to comment on it. It's gonna be coming to the planning board tomorrow night. And also, there's an accessory dwelling unit where it's coming to the planning board tomorrow night as well.
Yeah, that was, that was interesting.
Yes, it was.
Okay, anything else? Then we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.